I'll still hold a little bit longer.
Football's on, Mike. Will you just jazz it along a bit?
Yeah. Who's playing?
United, come on.
See, standers are off past Mike, so if you can do it in eighteen minutes, that's even better.
Sorry, sorry I'm late, folks.
We're all now live, folks.
Right, we're live. Okay, apologies for starting this late, but we had people with IT problems struggling to join. This is a particular meeting just to set the preset for next year. Uh, I'm cheering it because the, uh, normal chair Cathy has a sore throat. And so I'll just start off with apologies for absence, please.
Not my seat chairman, but we, we know that Sue Gordon has difficulties joining IT based meetings.
Okey dokey. Code of conduct, I'm not aware of any, but just the usual things there to make the clerk aware. If somebody feels that we're setting a budget, this is going to financially advantage them. I'm not aware of that. So the item three is the financial monitoring and the cash flow position for the year ahead. Um, Claire, do you want to talk to your paperwork?
Yeah, um, so with regards to Leisure Centre, obviously due to Covid closures and, um, all the rest of it, we've got quite a big deficit on the total income we were expecting for the year. We have obviously had, um, kind of a slight balancing in that no sales mean there's very, you know, the cost of sales is reduced as well. Um, and I've worked hard to reduce the overheads down. However, um, we had made a provision in the budget last, when we set it last year, of fourteen thousand pounds, um, lots on the centre. And the way it's looking at the minute, it's looking like there's potentially an extra, um, eighteen point four on top of that to cover. Now, like I say, I'm still working to try and reduce things down. We're keeping usage on gas and electric to absolute bare minimum with, um, the users that we've got in at present. Um, so hopefully that will be a slightly better position, but it's still gonna be, you know, a decent deficit on what we were expecting. They're looking at over the ten, probably over sixteen. I can't see it coming down by much more. Um, like I say, with the, um, expenditure on the parish, we've got about fourteen point one, um, uh, in, in funds spare. So again, if it does come in where it comes in, we're looking at needing to find about sixteen to eighteen thousand pounds to cover the gap.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Claire, from the numbers that I'm seeing, and for the benefit of creating a record in the minutes and the, anybody who wishes to see this streaming live. The main problem would appear to be that the total income, just correct me if I get these figures wrong. The projected income for the year is going to be about sixty seven thousand, well, sixty eight thousand, sixty seven thousand nine hundred and thirty seven, of which furlough makes up about thirty of it. So the total income that we're get, looking at getting in is in the region of thirty seven thousand, thirty eight thousand pounds from the, from the, from the, from the centre.
Yeah, that, that's just from the centre, obviously, preset is accounted for on the parish.
So effectively, if we end up with as bad a year as we had last year, one of the things to look at in the budgeting group we're going to set up is, it's the fact that income levels will be very low is the thing that is causing this deficit. Would that be a fair summary?
Yeah, like I say, um, if income had been even like half as good again, we wouldn't be looking at having the deficit on there because of the, obviously the increase of cost of sales would come up, but the overheads themselves would stay relatively similar. You're talking minimal fluctuation on gas and electric depending on which rooms have got lights on and.
I'm not sure I entirely agree because if we had more staff in the centre, then the wages go up commensurately, but for, for, for the purposes of.
Well, sorry, to be fair, unless it was back up to full blown parties, we would only have the one member of staff on that we'd have anyway. So.
The other thing to note, to read into the record is that we have had confirmation that we are going to pay, have to pay with, in addition to not getting the twenty five thousand pound income support, which would have been enough to reverse that deficit, we also have to pay business rates. And in the, in the conversation that was outside of this meeting before, that means that they are, we are looking to have to pay nineteen thousand seven hundred and thirty three pounds and, uh, sorry, what's the rate bill for this year?
Uh, the rates bill for this year, including the, uh, activated for last is, uh, twelve point seven K. So that's a large chunk of the deficit that we.
Which then means the best estimate for land in the year currently is eighteen thousand four hundred and eighty two pounds twenty eight pence?
Well, like I said, the overall on the year is thirty two point four, but because we'd accounted fourteen, the, um, additional deficit is eighteen point four.
I'm just, I'm just checking that I, because as the leisure centre management committee, I just want to make sure I've got this precisely correct. We've got about sixteen thousand pounds from last year on our balance sheet.
Yep, money that's been pulled in.
And by the time we get that money in and we pay everything that we're going to pay out, we are going to have to pay eighteen thousand four hundred and eighty two pounds of the sixteen thousand that we've got. So we're going to end up needing something like three thousand pounds. We're going to be three thousand pound down before we start the year.
Yeah.
That's correct. In, in, in figures.
I'm just running the numbers through my head to make sure, but yeah, approximately, yeah.
And then, if we set a, a budget that is balanced this year, um, we'd still have that three thousand, four thousand pound to spend to find from last year. Because by then we'd have to be paying the rates and the bills would catch up for us. Is that correct?
Yep.
That your understanding? Right. Okey dokey. So that covers the, does anybody have any other questions then on the outcome position for next year? The fact it's dominated by limited income. The RFO has done their best to get up the costs down. We've got a rate bill to pay. And we're going to end up having, if you like, an overdraft. We can't have an overdraft as a precept to the authority. That would be unlawful. Um, but we're going to be about three to four thousand pound in effect overdrawn if we paid all the bills we're expected to pay and we get all the income we're expected to get in. We start the year about four thousand pound down.
Can, can I just ask a question, Mike?
Certainly can.
Is this assuming that you're going to get the income in that you're presently getting in? Not the old income, but the, the income that you're presently getting. I.e. the nursery is probably the biggest part of that.
Yes, there is the nursery and basically first aid courses that can still run because and certain ones are still allowed to run for key workers and.
Yeah, that's only currently though, isn't it?
I have, I've not accounted for anything in the way really of, um, alcohol sales because I have no expectation of them. No sales going ahead before April, if then. Um, but, um, there may be a small amount of like tea or coffee or soft drinks if someone wants them whilst they're in the centre, but and, you know, to get them to take out, but.
If the nursery suddenly, if they suddenly close nurseries, which could look be likely, how does that leave the leisure centre?
If they close the nursery, Paul goes on instant furlough and we make actually more money because, um, the nursery doesn't cover the cost really of Paul being there.
No, it doesn't. That's.
So we, we would be in a slightly better position if nursery wasn't in.
That's why, that's why, that's why in one of the motions that we've got to go to it, we've got to move Claire to a situation where we let people let themselves in.
Well, we can't for insurance purposes, Mike.
We're going to have to let people in, otherwise we're not going to have the money to operate. We're going to have to close it.
But then if something happens, we're not covered by the insurance and that costs us even more.
Even if you have somebody on standby?
Even if you have somebody on standby with users in the centre, if something happens to one of those kids and or one of your staff.
Oh, no, that my kid, no, 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 no. My kid's covered by my insurance. Well, I'm saying mine. It's not mine anymore.
We're getting into, we're getting into detail that we can cover in the leisure centre management committee, to be fair. But having a staff member paid to be on a site where you're not earning the income from it, as a businessman, I have a real problem with that because you cannot operate that as a business. It's not a model that's sustainable. When you're already going to hit the year four thousand pound down, Claire, you can't.
I appreciate that, Mike, but as the nursery is there as part of the community services that we provide. And I was under instruction that even if it was only the nursery that was in, we would walk.
Oh, it'll open, but we'll find a different way of doing it. Anyway, moving on through the thing. That leads, everybody, everybody's clear that we're going to have a deficit of about four thousand pound to find before we start this year. Is everybody comfortable that that's the factual position, Graham?
Don't be that bad at all. I think we've done very well. Just have a four thousand pound deficit.
It's not just a debt, it's not just a debt.
I'd like to thank Claire for all the work that she's done in reducing our overheads. I think that's been absolutely crucial. And for that closing position, I'd like to say thank you, Claire, for all the work you've done.
I'd like to second that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a five thousand pound deficit though. The budget deficit is about eighteen. We're just using our reserves up to cover it, Graham.
That means you've used all your money.
Hmm.
All the money that is available to us.
Hmm.
Yeah.
And, and four grand.
And we're still four grand down.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the way I see it, but I don't know.
Right, so I'm just letting that sink in. I know we want to get through this. So that leaves us for the draft budget and what preset we're going to set this year. Okay? So Claire, do you want to talk to the various options that you've put down?
Well, to be fair, the options that were put down, um, basically, I sent round the sheet with the options that you saw at the December meeting. Um, with an extra column for the roughly five pound that, um, Mike, I believe you suggested at, at the December meeting, an option for how we would balance that on the preset. Um, and then obviously, um, councillor friend asked for the zero rate adjustment once, so there was an additional column for that on there. Um, I don't think, given the fact that we're going to obviously run a deficit, that the zero rate option is particularly an option. But, um, there was also, I don't know, was it circulated to all council members? Mike, the options that you put forward as well, I received today.
No, that's been something that we're discussing as a Labour group last night, but it was assuming that the rates position wouldn't wipe out the balance. So that news, although I do appreciate from what you've said, you've got the nine thousand pound rate bill in this year's budget in all these figures that you put in.
Yeah, because the, the, um, the rate holiday was only for twelve months. Anyway, it was never going to be for the next year's finances. And so.
So for those members who were there in a Labour group meeting last night, those who weren't and those who are independents, one of the options that we discussed last night and this morning was a four pound rise, which would give us enough to bring the litter picking service in house at a cost of thirteen thousand five hundred pounds. It would mean getting rid of the traffic management budget entirely. It would mean getting rid of the aspiration to do a leisure survey entirely. It would also mean taking out anything for Peel Hall unless we started to use the ten thousand pound Millennium Reserve, which is the only thing we've got to cover the shortfall. And if you put a four pound rise on that, you can ballast the budget on that basis. But it doesn't give you the four thousand pounds that you will need. In a meeting last night, we also discussed the concept of two pence a day, which is a seven pounds thirty rise. That allows you to bring the litter picker service in house at thirteen thousand five hundred pounds. Again, there is no traffic management charge. There is no Peel Hall fee in there, although you've got the Millennium Reserve if something does crop up. There's no activity survey. That two P per day nets you correlative to Claire's budget to net surplus of five thousand seven hundred and forty five pounds, which will cover the, uh, underspend, they, oh, sorry, the overspend last year. And, um, and, uh, if something comes in for the, for Peel Hall, you'll obviously end up having to use the Millennium Fund as a reserve. So I would favour, I don't now look to the chair as well because I've just got my numbers live on the screen. I would say that we are safer to set a seven pound thirty pence, which is two pence a day budget than try and get away with anything less. But I'm open to suggestion because the issue with the rates is coming, um, hot and live as it were. I'll look to members' views across.
Yeah, Graham, friend.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I, can I ask what plans there are to make the leisure centre run it so it doesn't make a loss? Which was a big election pledge for us in two thousand and sixteen. Well, it was the only election pledge that we made in two thousand and sixteen. The, the leisure centre was losing forty thousand a year when we took over. And our big pledge was to reduce that to zero within our term of office. Can I ask what plans we've got for that?
Well, my understanding, Graham, is we, we stood on three things. One is to bring, to undertake a litter picking service, which we've done. The other was the traffic calming, which has been done. And the other, as you quite rightly say, was to get the leisure centre functioning uh, on a, you know, on a, a not for profit basis, you know, not on a not profit basis, but a break even basis. And we, and in the budget for last year, we were five thousand pounds away from that. But I don't think anybody can reasonably foresee the fact that our income is going to go from, what's the normal income? What was the income last year, Claire?
Um, oh, bear with me, I haven't got that in front of me. One minute.
The litter picker was not mentioned until after the two thousand and sixteen elections.
It was never an original pledge.
It was certainly not. I agree.
Our pledge, our pledge was to try to redraw the rebounders as soon as possible. Um, and to make the leisure centre work not for profit, but not to lose any money. They were our pledges to our residents. The litter picker was never on at the beginning.
It's not what I recall, but I mean, it's, it's on the service.
It was on Cathy's, I think, when Cathy stood afterwards. Because originally Winnick had three independent.
Hmm.
So if it was our new pledge then, it wasn't voted in because you've got three independents, not Labour originally. Cathy brought it in when she stood.
Either way, Diana, either way, Diana, we've got a service that we provide now and we've got to decide.
Got a luxurious service that you provide.
That we can't afford. That's the problem.
My original question stands, what plans have we got to reduce the losses at the leisure centre to zero?
Uh, bear with me a second, Graham. I'm coming back. Um, okay, so basically last year, last financial year, not this one currently, um, we made a hundred and sixty eight thousand five hundred pound on just the bar sales. No, not the room hire as well, just the bar sales this next financial year because we don't know what the upheaval is going to be, what the knock on effect is going to be on the income from the, you know, Covid because with extending furlough until April, we're still not sure where we're going to be stood with that. Um, that has been reduced down to, um, an estimate of about ninety two point one in, on bar sales now. Anything over that will obvi, and bear with me, please, anything.
I will bear with you, but.
And anything over that will obviously get fed back into the parish to make up for the deficit from this year. Same with the room hire. The room hire has not been set at the same levels as we'd previously had. Because again, we don't know what we're going to be allowed in, what, you know, where we're going to stand for the next, at least the first six months of the year. Um, so again, anything over and above, I purposely set them the income low. Um, so that if we make anything over and above, then that can be fed back into the parish funds.
I think the difficulty we've got is that you've seen the income from that collapse. And until we get to probably later summer, Graham, we are going to need to cut our cloth. Um, very much accordingly. It's just, it's almost an unknown quantity in terms of what the, you can't close it because if you close it, you're going to incur as much cost. That would be my view.
I was going to say, you probably incur more costs by the time you've had to have everything decommissioned and everything from inside of it, but.
So it's just a situation to get through. My concern with the concept of then reducing other services and other costs completely is you've fallen into the trap of, um, people really look to authorities like us to, if not trade out of it, pay a roll. You know, you're talking about someone's job there. And if we all go around chopping people's jobs out, um, then effectively you just increase and deepen the recession. So if you can at all get away, and I think I've seen something from, um, uh, from my union, from community to the effect that we should be trying to retain jobs, retain services, balance budgets and try to then use, um, you know, that Claire's done such a good job on renegotiating sort of, you know, the cost of the, the, the bottled gas and the electricity and the gas and those sorts of things. And also better use of the furlough scheme. Because if, as I say, we've got a difficult decision to go through. Claire's raised a very reasonable concern there that, you know, we have to have somebody on the premises to open up. We need to look at that and revisit it. We need to make as better, as much use of the furlough scheme as possible. Because if we were to go down that route and look at furloughing more of our people, it saves us money. But when the centre is able to open, those posts are there on the structure. If you look at cutting posts now, my concern is you're creating unemployment, you're creating a downward, you know, a dip and you are creating hardship that is going to be difficult to, to, to trade out of. That's my, that's my concern. But I do share your view that any increase has got to be as low as possible. Does anybody got any other thoughts? Cathy's got her handle. You're on mute, Cathy.
Sorry, Mike. Um, can I propose the motion and read it out so everybody knows what it is?
Yeah, go ahead. You take it slow for Julian, please.
I will. This meeting of the council notes the need to set a preset for twenty one, twenty two this week and also reiterates its position and thanks to the council staff for their hard work in the last ten months. The council is also aware of the need to keep preset increases to a minimum. However, based on the figures for the outturn this year, the likely required closure of the centre's main use until mid spring and the budget figures provided by the RFO, the council feels that a preset increase of two pence per day, seven pound thirty, that's for band D property. So properties less and that would pay less is the best and balanced option to safeguard the council's financial position, protect services, but require our staff to find around forty percent of the shortfall in funding from efficiency savings, a twelve pound figure being the base figure that was advised by the RFO. In finding these savings, the council will, one, operate a policy of protecting frontline services first, but look to make savings by bringing services in house and managing, managing them internally with the offices it has. The litter picking service will therefore be restructured and brought in house with the target saving being twenty percent, such that a budget for this year of, of thirteen, thirteen point five K is set for this item. Item two, the completion of other items of work that do not protect frontline services but fund initiatives will be placed on hold with budgets for these items being set as funds become available. Three, should any of these items require reprioritising, such as further funds for Peel Hall or exceptional and unexpected costs, such as a rate arise, then the Millennium Fund, current balance circa ten thousand pounds, will be made available. Funds will only be spent on the approval of full council. Four, the above measures will however not fully balance the budget and in seeking to achieve the balance, the following measures will be undertaken. Subsection one, as per the previous budget motion, a working group made up of the management committee plus the chair, no vacancies need to be filled on this committee. This group will meet informally to set a balanced budget based on the above preset and present a budget to council by its February meeting. Subsection two, in setting the budget, the priority will be to set a budget that protects the services and work, field maintenance, et cetera, that rate payers benefit from. Subsection three, protection of all posts within the leisure centre. Subsection four, seek to make fuller use of the support and furlough scheme offered by the government, the aim being to better match the wages bill for the centre to the very limited income from the essential users who still use the facility. Part of this savings programme will involve the establishment of a trusted key holder policy for the most regular users. Item five, as the above work involves personnel issues, this work on restructuring of the budget will commence immediately in part two of the enhanced management committee tonight, but will be reported in part one publicly available minutes. And that's the end of the motion. I'll propose that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, I'll second if you can hear me.
Got you, Tim. Alright, so we've had, it's quite a comprehensive motion that Cathy, we've talked about it. Is there anybody who wants to speak in favour of it or against it?
Yeah, can I have a pocket that motion? I've not seen it. Mine said four pounds and had yellow marks all over it. Copy I received.
I think there may have been an earlier one, but it was the exact wording. If you look, Graham.
Hey.
There was an earlier one that before we, we got hit with the rates this morning, there was an earlier one sent, sent on around Robin.
Including the motion, I've received one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine other.
Sent to eight fifty this morning and it included the figure and stuff.
I've been very ill, so I haven't been able to read that.
No, it's all right. I mean, Graham, I, I finished work at two minutes to seven.
Can I, can we in the future have them all in one document and it issued at least a week before the meeting?
And can it be circulated on hard copy as well as? I, I had none of that. I don't understand what you're talking about now.
No.
Sorry, Graham.
I'm very conscious of that, Julian. Could you just advise me? Because I was originally told that we have to make a decision this week on the setting of the preset. Is that still the case?
I think, um, within legislation, we're, I think we're allowed until around March before setting the preset. But the issue is that the borough council will need to know your findings on the preset in order for them to be able to make their calculations too for it to enter their budget. So the borough's deadline, uh, it was actually yesterday. Now, I suspect with negotiation, we could probably talk to the borough about, uh, when we actually want the final figure. Um, but technically we're, we're, we're out of time, we're, we aren't present.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very much minded to set it to provisional figure. And then if members, if we, even if we've got a minority of members to allow people time to then digest that, look at numbers and come back. But and, and, you know, but if there's a, but we, I think we have to set something this week, don't we, as a figure?
Don't we need some certainty here going forward? Because, you know, there's a lot hanging on this. And I think we've had a lot of discussion about this preset previously. So people have got a view of what preset they wanted to set regardless of what the motion says. The motion is just, you know, saying how we intend to do it, but that, I, I think that was plain enough what we were saying.
No, I, I would disagree. I think. I would disagree. I think only having a few hours to have a look at the motion is just not enough. As I said, I hadn't seen, I'd seen most of that motion because it was similar to a previous one, but I, I hadn't seen that one.
This morning, Graham.
Why are we rushing these things at the last minute?
Yeah.
We've had weeks all over Christmas to sort these things out.
Can I just say I agree with Graham on this?
I, I'm very sympathetic to you.
Not a meeting.
The fact, the fact of the matter is the numbers have been there from the RFO for, Claire, when did you get the numbers out on the actual figures?
I think the original set was sent out in October. Then we've obviously had the November, the December adjustments. And then I circulated Thursday, maybe Friday of last week.
Friday.
When did we get, and when did we get the clarification that we are going to have to pay this rather high rate bill?
The rate bill clarification was only today because Cathy's basically pushed them to give us an answer.
But it's all factored in, isn't it? And all these figures have been around for a long time. I'd be against any delay. I think we should get on with it.
Well, we've got a formal motion on the table.
Can I say something?
You can, yes, Sue. Yep.
Right. The motion, what Cathy's just stressed. In principle, I agree. However, there's something, something, there's something not quite right because I know for a fact that you can work on a key system for every community centre. The Borough Council does it all the time on their insurance. I also know that if you add a voluntary organisation as a semi-management group or whatever, they can claim, you don't have to pay business rates. So there are ways to make that centre functioning. I don't think that we are looking at it correctly. If, if, hang on, let me finish. Be patient with me because I'm, this is off the top of my head here. I believe since being on the parish, and I'm being totally honest here, that we have got a problem financially with the club. And, and it's not on its own, especially this year. There's a lot, a lot of businesses that are struggling. However, we have an obligation to our parishioners there to, as Graham says, to ensure that it's run to make a profit or to at least break even. For various reasons, we've not been able to do it. But I think it should be in that motion that we sit down as soon as we get through the precept bit. And the first order of business is to work out how that club can work and make or break even without it costing those provision, those parishioners anymore in precepts. Because come on, sometimes you've got to draw a line under it.
I think with fairness.
I'm sorry, because that's a hard fact to swallow, but I'm sorry, but that's it.
I think with fairness to Cathy, around item four and five, that's in there to then start to balance the, and I think it deals with Anne's concern, because I spoke to Anne in some detail on Sunday about this. The need in the circumstances that we're in to match our expenditure on effectively our wage bill to the income that we've got coming in. We cannot afford to be having staff that cost us more to open up a centre to be there while they're letting, that's paying, we can't afford to be paying £75 in wages if there's a £30 letting. We need to let the people in, let them use it, and we need to find a way around that. That is in the motion, and that is certainly how I'm taking the job of the working group that starts, if you like.
It's not just about that, though. It's not just about the key system, it's about the whole centre and how, I mean, if it entails setting up a voluntary management group, it can be done with the, with the parish. It, any, anything's possible if you just open your minds and look at changing things.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, Sue, and I'll take that away. I did actually suggest we should look at setting up an arms-length company to run the bar operation. And it didn't get very far, about three or four months ago when the, well, when we got turned down for the £25,000. I did actually suggest that, and the consensus was that that wasn't the right thing to do at that time. I'm more than happy to revisit that.
And can I say something?
Yes, I could say, sorry, Anne, I can't see all my tiles on my screen.
No, I understand. You will never bite the bullet where the leisure centre is concerned and do what you have to do. And I've been saying this now for a long time. You always want to make it run the same way. This Covid situation gave us an opportunity to try something different, and we've never tried anything different. We've never tried to run it differently. We've never tried to close it for two. I'm not saying what we should do because I don't really know now. It's got beyond me. But you've never tried to do anything different. The leisure centre now runs in exactly the same way as it's run last year, last year, last year, last year, last year, with the same staffing, the same openings, the same palaver that goes on. And I for one know more about it than a lot because I'm there more. But, and you're just not willing to, to.
Oh, um, listen, me and you sit on that, to be fair, councillor, being formal as then as the chair, me and you sit on that group, we're most, we're the most frequent attendees. You're the person I spoke to on Sunday. I don't think, like a left hand and a right hand, I don't think there's much difference between us on what we want to do next. I really don't think there's going to, there's much difference. It's just the difficulty of then doing it. You can, you can talk about, you see, if you, you tinker around the energy, edges, if you just close this night and that night, you've got, as you say, look at sort of,
You've got to look at the whole thing.
You've got to run it as a business. You've got to run it as a business, which is what I'm saying.
You're not running it as a business.
It's got to be run as a community thing.
We, Anne, you are part of this collectively.
Well, we never have then, because obviously I'm out of sync with what you're talking about now. I'm not, I'm not an agorer to this. I know it will be agreed probably. But, I mean, that's, that's the, as an independent, that's the position I expect to be in.
No, but there's two separate things here. There's two separate things. There's balancing the budget, which is a mixture of all things, which are things out of our control, like the council deciding it's going to hammer us with the weight bill because we are a precepting authority, to Claire changing the electricity supply and getting us a good saver. There are many things that, which are just good, just good practice. And then there's actually running the centre. So I think we need to look at what we're.
Two totally different things.
Agreed. But what we're here for this meeting to do, and I'm allowing, is set the precept.
And you've got a motion on the table.
We've got a motion on the table to go for a two p a day increase and then task the management committee with a few extra people on it to then go and do what you're asking.
Yes, I agree. You've got a motion on the table. I'd just like to ask Cathy one thing. Two p a day in, two p a day. What does that equate to on a band, what's the normal rate? D, A? I don't know what my rates are.
And it's based on a band D property and it's.
D is it? I can never remember which is the basic.
D, D.
A band D, I don't know what it breaks down to, a C or a B or an A.
How much a year does that work out to Cathy? Please, if anybody, or Claire or.
It's a £7.30 a person for the year. So seventy-three. Yeah, seventy-three over the ten months. A property, sorry.
And what, what at present is a band D paying?
I don't.
It's a seven and a half percent increase, if that helps, Graham.
Hundred pound then.
Well, no, it's, it would take it up to the, £22.24 a year total.
Sorry.
It, it should take up to about £72.24 for the year. Bram as a total bill from sixty.
About £65, then.
Like I say, £7.30 a year increase, so 73 pence over the, that's to be broken down to.
Is that between 12 and 15% increase?
No, seven and a half.
No, seven and a half, yeah.
Seven and a half cent increase on £65 is not seven.
No, it's, no, the, the £4 increase was seven, about seven and a half, when I've.
I'm sorry.
It's about a 10.8% increase on the, for the £7.30.
Right, a lot of our residents have had one of their worst financial years.
Yeah.
In a long time, and people on benefits still pay a proportion of their rates bill. And they're about to have their benefits up by this government. I feel it's too much of a burden to have this increase, a 12 to 15% increase on top of their rates. I think that's outrageous, really.
I agree with you, Graham.
The centre needs to seriously look at itself of how it can be run differently. As Anne said, it's tweaked around the edges for years. It needs a completely.
And still is being, still is being.
It still is, Anne. You're 100% correct.
I'm sorry, but.
We won't do anything about it until we draw a line, Anne.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm taking that, Graham, with, I can, I can fully appreciate his point of view. We've got, does anybody want to either speak in favour or against the motion? I'll take the vote first of all. If it falls, then I'll look to members to set a different precept. Well, we might be, you know, democracy is a wonderful thing. So is anybody who wants to speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, what's your rate? But I will allow it. Go on.
Can, can I ask if anybody at this meeting has got a suggestion that we could actually do rather than put precepts up to balance our books before we go into the next finance, financial year?
Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take the motion first because that's on the table, Sue. If the motion falls, then that will be a matter for debate. So is everybody happy that we put that motion to the vote? Now, because I've got struggled chair in this, because I've only got unlimited number of tiles, can I suggest, Julian, that you, can you see everybody on your screen, Julian, at the moment?
I can hear you.
So can I take it that you just take it in turn and ask them if they're in favour or against, and we record the vote that way? Can't hear you, Julian.
Sorry, I was just writing names down, just so I can get them in order. So I will, I'm going alphabetically, and we'll come back to the chair last of all. So alphabetically, councillor Collins, for or against?
I am in support of the motion so far.
Councillor Emery, for or against?
I'm, to be honest with you, I don't know whether I should not vote because I'm not standing in May.
You may abstain if you wish. Sorry, I should have listed that as an option.
Then I'll abstain. I'll abstain, please. I don't think it's fair that I vote on something that's got to be carried by someone else.
Councillor Diana Friend.
I am against the motion.
Councillor Graham Friend.
Against.
Councillor Anne Eden.
Against.
Councillor Cathy Mitchell.
For.
Councillor Chris Wall.
For.
Councillor Mike Matthews.
For.
Um, I haven't voted.
Oh, sorry, for now, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon.
Yeah, I didn't want to permit that.
But come on, come on, Ross, the budget hangs on your bloody vote here.
I'll be voting for.
Oh, thank you.
Five, three.
Well done, Ross.
Five in favour of the motion, three against and one abstention.
Right, so that in effect gives us something to work on. And I think that concludes the meeting, doesn't it? There's no other agenda on the, on the main agenda.
It does, yeah. Outside the meeting, if you could just clarify the exact precept figure for me, and then I can notify the board.
Okay, okay. Can I thank people for attending? And are we doing a separate Zoom link for the leisure centre meeting, the management committee meeting? Or are we just staying on the line, those who want to be involved?
We're just staying on the line, Chair. I would just ask that we wait until eight o'clock before starting that meeting.
Right, okay.
To blank the screens in the meantime, because it's still live streaming, so.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you very much for your help, and I do appreciate, I particularly appreciate those people who voted against because I can see the logic and entirely sympathise with the views. But we've got a number to work around, and obviously if we end up with a surplus, we can decide not to put precepts up next year. So thank you for, for the debate being so orderly. It's a pleasure to chair that, well, as much as a pleasure it's going to be.
Thank you for your leadership, Mike.
Thank you very much, Chris. Thank you very much. Thank you for reading that out, and thank you, thank you, everybody. It's a difficult, it's a difficult, it's probably the most difficult budget we're ever going to set because there is so much uncertainty, and I'd like to thank Claire for the figures that she's put together. Cathy for chasing through the rates thing today. It's, that's one of the reasons it's been a bit hair and scaring. But at least we can get on some subcommittee now and try and work out how that, how that balance out. So I'm just going to grab a quick cup of tea. I'll see you all who want to be involved or are members of the management committee. I remind people that any member can attend if they want to stay on the line. If you don't, by all means leave. I'll see you all in about three minutes. Okay?
Thanks for the invite. I'm off. Nice to everyone.
Bye-bye, everyone.
Yeah, I'm also not on the committee, so I'm going as well. Thanks, everyone. Take care all. Bye-bye, bye-bye, bye-bye.
By the way, Claire, congratulations. I didn't realise until just before Christmas you were expecting.
Oh, but you weren't at the meeting, were you? But yeah, due July, so.
It came as an absolute and utter surprise when Cathy told me. I was amazed. Well, yeah, well done.
It's like, huh, she's too acerbic to want to give. She's already got one.
Well, there was lots of reasons, but I know Neil wanted one, so that's great news.
Neil, Neil wanted, always wanted a little, and it's just one of those. It's very weird because Kelly's just about to go off to bloody uni and then. It's very weird because Kelly's just about to go off to bloody uni and then I'm about to start again.
That's why, oh yeah.
We've had all those sorts of conversations at peak, let's put it that way.
Are we live now, Julian?
We are live, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
On the plus side, when I go maternity, whatever you pay me, we get 110% to be packed. So you're making, you're making 10% on me for a few months.
Well, we've been, we've been, we were looking at that because I'm amazed because I employ, I know we're live, but I mean, this is chatter, but.
Gary, it's at his meeting.
I employ, yeah, I employ mainly female workers and I'm amazed we haven't had a peak baby. Right, I'm calling this meeting to order. Am I chairing this one again?
Yes, it's the management meeting.
Does it come in the same pack?
It came in the same envelope, yeah.
Set of papers for it, I think.
Thought it was open. I'm sorry, it is, yeah, I was, I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting minute blind here. So meeting, the management to take place on Tuesday, the 12th of January, on the rising of the special council meeting, now we're seeing the word special, apologies for absence.
Again from councillor Gordon.
Okay, can I just take it, are we carrying vacancies on this committee? Because I do think we perhaps need to go back to members because we're going to be looking at how to balance the budget and because it's quite rightly a controversial subject. I think we need to get this committee up to strength, I don't know if the chair of the full council would acknowledge that.
As it stands at present, there are five members on the committee, two independents, councillor Iddon and councillor Gordon, and three Labour members. Now, one of the Labour members appointed, councillor Gosney, who's normally a councillor, and we've carried a vacancy for a long time. So in the interim, while Covid appeared, councillors Graham and Diana Friend joined the committee along with yourself to make up the three Labour members. So where we stand at present, they're on the substitutes effectively. So if any Labour member is not present, another Labour member comes up for them.
Can I suggest we put membership then on the meeting, the main council meeting? Because I think, I am conscious from the interchange that I've been, I agree with most of what Anne says. But there's been meetings when there's only me and Anne present and we need to get as many members as possible involved. Because when it comes to, when it comes to supporting it and working out the numbers, then in effect, it's, I do feel, I don't feel put upon, but it's, and I don't, it's just, it's an awkward situation when people are criticizing, but then they don't turn up as a member of the committee to do the work.
It doesn't move anywhere different. You need more people.
Yeah, but the thing is, you turn up at the management meetings and actually try and work through that. I think what Mike's saying is you've got other people that are saying it never moves anywhere and they're never.
But that always happens.
Let's, let's see if we can freshen it up because many people might have been thinking they've got to finish, the term finishes, it may. But I believe we have got, haven't we, it is, has it been announced yet that we are, we are going to have to go through to October? Is that the case, Julian?
It's not formally announced, I don't think, with the strong indications that elections may be.
I don't think it's been decided.
I was going to say, speculation it was going to be June or July, I didn't realise there was speculation it was going to be that far.
Give it another two weeks and you'll be there till Boris starts it.
Good old Boris, so code of conduct, the usual things, I'm not aware of anything that covers, covers, covers up with a problem and therefore the next thing is to go to, I presume, minutes? Minutes of the meeting held on the 13th of October. I'm not going to read them into the record, but I'll go through them. Matthews, Friend, Friend and Iddon were present. Any issues arising with pages three and four? Five or six? Seven or eight? Nine, 10? Shout out because I've got my head down. Eleven, 12? It's a long time since we met. Thirteen, fourteen? I presume these are all minutes.
Thirteen's not minutes, mate.
Thirteen's not minutes, sorry, 12 is the end of the minutes, isn't it? Somebody is there who want to move their true record then?
I will, I will.
As I'm there, it's only, it's only us all second it. Okay. Item four, the action list, a few things being completed by looks of it there. Does anybody wish to comment on page, agenda item four, which comes after, I think, page 12 before?
Only to say, all of the items were about expenditure on the leisure centre, which obviously we're no longer doing given the current circumstances.
Yeah, okay. Anybody want to raise anything under item four? Item five, learn to consider any non-confidential matters in relation to the terms of reference in Claire's report, which I think takes us up to the end of December and heading into lockdown, is that correct, Claire?
Yeah, I mean, you've got, Julian's put in obviously copies of the historic reports, the November, December ones, and then I circulated the January one. I mean, as previously reported in the meeting, you know, we've seen significant deficit on income. Bar sales in particular are down by about £113,000 at present on what we were expecting to make. Cash takings have been low, obviously due to the tier restrictions. Tea and coffee did surprisingly well in December, it wasn't far off what we did the previous year, but I think that's because we were pretty much, we were pretty much selling tea and coffee in maybe cans of pop, so we didn't have much option.
I mean, it sounds, it sounds a little bit left field, but, and I don't like the idea, but I'm just going to say it, but that's almost the concept of a village shop. And if you look at a lot of pubs, they converted themselves to shops. I'm not suggesting we go down that route, but people just look for something to get from somewhere that they can.
Well, that's the thing, we had some of the preschool mums or the mums from the, from Winnick Primary that, because they could go and sit in a room and have a coffee and, you know, potentially chat to each other and be heard because, you know, there wasn't a lot of people in there. They could sit separately and still have a bit of a conversation without being overly loud and everything. Then they'd go and they, you know, they'd have two, three cups of coffee because they were just getting to see people. So, you know, that bolstered the tea and coffee.
But now we're in lockdown, the only thing they could do is have it for takeout and then walk around the field.
Yeah, and it's not the weather.
Indeed.
Yeah, so.
The, the only point I would make and I would, I would imagine, and we were going to go into part two shortly so we can have slightly more confidential, but this is where I don't think I'm apart from Anne. It's because the income's low and I think the income is pretty much on where I noticed it was said as a members. It was one time it was pessimistic, then it was a member's estimate. But it was pretty, it's pretty much as bad as what we thought it may be. And that, that may, and I think the thing we've got to learn is how to cope with that low level of income, possibly for the next six months, because I don't think this is going to end any time soon.
At least, this Covid hasn't finished with us yet.
No. And I think, and I think that for the public record and a constant that with this streaming, I think that would be something I would want in the written minutes is that that's where I think we've got quite a lot of work to do. I think it will get better and this time next year we'll be sitting at looking at what the income is and guessing a positive number rather than thinking it could still be down low. But if this is the last thing that's miniated in this part of the agenda, I think that that exceptionally poor year gives us, we've got to, we've got to think about how we make the centre as cost effective as possible around very similar numbers for a good few months yet. Would you agree with that, councillor Iddon?
I certainly agree with that and I think personally, and I'll say it again, I think it's going to get worse. They're talking about having lockdowns next winter as well because Covid will re-kick in. Now, I don't know, you can't predict it, you can't predict anything, but I think you've got to look at a very, very, very pessimistic view.
Yeah, amongst my social circle. Amongst my social circle, and I'm known as the most miserable bastard, pardon my language, but I think that basis, you, I'm going to be in silver medal in this, in this meeting. Apologies for swearing, members or any members of the public who are listening, but I do think we've got to take that pessimistic view.
It's a realistic view, in my opinion, but then that's only my opinion. But I think it's realistic to take that view.
Okay, does that conclude part one? Mr Clark? Is there anything else on the agenda? Have I missed something?
You're on mute, Julian.
Bear with me while I end the live stream.
Apologies for swearing against to, to members there, but it seemed an opportune point.
You just enjoyed it, really, Mike.
Are we off? I won't say the next comment until.
Mine still says live.
It always says that.
Oh, does it? I don't know.
I think Julian is just secretly recording them all to, to play back. Are we off yet, Julian?